To help move it forward. We have been so much and during this very given time, this season of thank goodness and help us all families to have a wonderful season and finish up the year strong and as we enter the two thousand twenty, it will be blessing us as we've done throughout our whole lifetime. And we thank you for everything you've given us, guys, and we try. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ben would you might call him, please?
Member Gold?
Here.
Member Fontaine?
Here.
Member Peter?
Here.
Member Holt?
Here.
Member Ryan?
Here.
Member Sroya?
Here.
Member Zretta?
Here.
All right, thank you. For your consideration, a motion in the second to approve as presented. Committee? Committee, can you tell you please? Committee, the whole minutes, November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. Committee meeting minutes, November twenty fifth. Motion approved as presented. All in favor? All right, close. Motion carries. This time, if you wish to address council, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Friendly reminder, we have a five-minute timeline on the clock. There.
Larry Tripp, one one two seven East Maple, North Canton. Today's Martin Olson Star County Political Report had an interesting tweet pertaining to completion of the Hoover complex, probably a bit premature since the two individuals featured have been in office only a few days, but I believe his message is clear. North Canton citizens and Star County politicians are watching your performance closely. The same will be true of city council after their retention of council president for another two years. Thus, North Canton citizens expect more of the same, probably nothing, to come from this council. Leadership is a quality to make others around them better. This has not worked in the past and will not work. Look up and down Main Street. Look at the relations with the schools. Look at the chaos within the legislative ranks. You may want more. Look at tonight's agenda. Item thirteen, December meeting schedule. No meetings December twenty-third or the thirtieth. Why? They call it a winter recess. No mention of a winter recess in the city charter. City Hall is open for business. Why not city council? Then to top it off, no absence, no returns times for the council meetings in January twenty twenty. So newly elect Wilder and Sroya, your first major obstacle, city council. Calling off meetings when they want, when meetings are called, those not attending meetings, or when they're here, not preparing. Now, at the expense of council, this city has so much to do. Arrowhead, the Hoover District, personnel chaos. Though the North Canton government has an attractive place to work, legislation on rental property and much, much more, yet, let's take the winter recess. Let's look at a couple of items that just started, starting with the personnel chaos within the legislative side. In a five-year period, loss of two finance directors, three council clerks, and a deputy finance director. Why? Ms. Loretta, thank you for your stepping in as an intern finance director. As a compliment to you, I've heard nothing but praise concerning your abilities and your work and ethics as a finance director, but as a council clerk, I may have a question there. I assume you are aware of your council clerk duties because as of March eleventh this year, by voice vote, council assigned all duties of the council clerk to the finance director. I've heard or seen nothing since that date to refute my statement. Perhaps another oversight by council, but yet, let's take the winter recess. Tonight's committee of the whole agenda, you will note a resolution on Arrowhead that to be handled on an emergency note. Please pray tell me, after seven years of questionable actions by both RIS Gulf along with the city, why and what now constitutes to having an emergency? You would have thought council would have, you would have thought council, having been brought to their meetings during the meeting of May the thirteenth concerning ordinance forty twenty nineteen rental regulations, they would have learned something. This too was placed on emergency legislation and would have undoubtedly passed. But was tabled quickly after remark by Mrs. Combs, the treasurer of the Stark Board of Realtors, who questioned the competence of the legislation as well as the emergency clause. Now, seven months later, where is that legislation? In my mind, I suspect it is ready to go, but met with, let's take the winter recess. So welcome in Wilder and Councilman Sroya. I first to wish you the best of luck and between the two of you, your work ethics transfers and may work its course after a short period of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else wishing to address council?
Turk Austin, one three oh seven February Street Southeast, North Canton, Ohio. Seventeen years ago, former Mayor Tom Rice, Council President John Snyder, and then city administrator David Hill, put forth a proposal for the city to purchase Arrowhead Golf Course for four point two million dollars. As a member of city council at the time, I embarked on a great deal of research on my own, as I have done many times on many issues. I gathered financials from the city of Akron on their municipal golf course and visited other golf courses in the area. It was serendipitous that I, that when I visited the Rain Tree Golf Course in green, that I ran into the owner of the golf property, Mr. John Ramieri. It was Mr. Ramieri who provided me with a valuable insight that was instrumental in my vote against the legislation that was pushed through council for the purchase of Arrowhead. Mr. Ramieri gave me financial guidance regarding the fair market value of the property, which I concluded was between two point two and two point five million. Further, Mr. Ramieri gave me the latest edition of PGA Magazine, April twenty thousand three edition, which had just published part one of a special report titled Wake Up. The article was an analysis of the golf industry over the previous two decades. The special report should have caused pause for anyone in the public or private sector to think long and hard before concluding they could enter the world of golf and survive financially. The report's analysis estimated that revenues related to the golf industry were down two point seven seven billion dollars. A tally of the financial losses from North Canton taxpayers begins with the highly rated price that Rice, Snyder, and Hill negotiated for the purchase price. The latest appraisal of Arrowhead, I have seen done in two thousand eleven, appraised the property at one point nine million. The city leased Arrowhead for five years, two thousand and three through two thousand and eight, to Kevin Marissa, and he left owing the city a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which was written off. The next ten years, two thousand and nine through two thousand and eighteen, RNS Golf Properties leased the property. Their lease was terminated earlier this year, and there are estimates they owe untold hundreds of thousands, possibly a greatly over worth to the city. I see that there is discussion on tonight's agenda to commence legal action to recover lease payments and capital improvements from the previous lawsuits. Delayed maintenance over the sixteen years the city has owned the property has been estimated in a recent analysis of the property at nearly five million dollars, of which approximately eight hundred thousand is engineering and other administrative costs. The two thousand and three PGA Magazine special report foretold what to expect, and it has come to pass. After sixteen years with losses in the billions of dollars, that should be crystal clear. Three meals at an isolated location surrounded by residential homes and competing with hundreds of nearby restaurants is not going to make a dire financial golf situation any more powerful. Further, making a multimillion dollar facility available to a local golf operator slash restaurant owner at no cost and paying him to use that facility, as well as paying all the expenses, is an insult to the citizens of North Canton. It is the citizens of North Canton who are bearing all the risk and all the cost for a recreational facility utilized for government by individuals who are not North Canton residents. But there is a way of bringing benefit to North Canton and its residents. First, I'll be say that the southwest quadrant of the city desperately needs storm and sewer, sanitary sewer infrastructure. With that said, the city could put in its own housing development and in the process address the need for storm and sewer infrastructure, and that quadrant of the city has part of the development of upscale housing for Arrowhead. A walking slash biking trail more substantial than the walking trail at Christ Park could be installed around the perimeter of the one hundred five acre property for all citizens to enjoy. The sale of a hundred half acre lots would be more, would more than cover the infrastructure costs and still leave substantial open space and green space. It is estimated that only eight percent of the U.S. population play golf. The tight trails of North Canton have subsidized the recreational venue for non-residents for far too long. The perimeter walking trail could be started without delay and would not interfere with the present golfing activities, which could continue under the current management agreement for one more year. Miracles do happen, but on a sound financial basis, golf is not going to reappear unless everyone up here wants to violate their fiduciary responsibilities to the citizens of North Canton and continue business as usual and state North Canton taxpayers are the financial money.
We understand where you're going. You have five minutes as the last thing.
Let's not repeat the financial, failed financial decisions of the past sixteen years.
Let's draw a bar. I know you don't like to play by the same rules everyone else does, but it's five minutes.
You got to get your jab in, didn't you?
Five minutes.
There you go.
Everybody else.
You wouldn't be here.
Anyone else wishing to address council?
Bill. Bill on that five one nine Baptist Street Southeast, North Canton. First of all, congratulations to the new mayor and new council person and to those that got re-elected. My, I went to the Winter Fest this past weekend and took my grandson up there. It was really cool. It was nice the way the North Canton City did it, very well organized. The only problem that I saw, I was over by the tree when sand was coming up and fire truck and everything. I could not understand what was being said over there on that stage. It's hard to understand that point. Maybe they could put some other speakers out more or something. That was just a point I saw, but it was, it was good the way everything was set up and my grandson's enjoying, I enjoyed it, it was a lot of fun. Got to see a lot of people again and a little cold, but other than that, it's okay. But the other thing I want to mention too is I'm looking forward to since we're setting a new year, getting the safety building project going again. It's something that's definitely needed here in the city and I just was involved in the committee in the very beginning and it was, it was taxing, I guess you could say, as far as what other cities and townships done to get what they have. And I started this three years ago. You know, the last safety building was supposed to build was twenty-five years ago. We went through the same crap, so I'm just saying it's something we need and just kind of putting, putting your back in your mind about this. I'm probably bugging some, some of you guys about it, but I just, I'm really strong about this new safety building as a few other people are. So, thanks, Bill. Thanks, Bill.
Anybody else? Last opportunity. Okay, moving on, may I have a motion in the second? I want to amend the agenda to include any six B to Larry's point. We did not name Mr. Ben Young, council clerk, at the last meeting, and I wanted to designate him council clerk since he will be taking over the new clerk duties.
You mean motion?
I do.
I move that we made the former individual clerk.
For a second.
Second.
All in favor? All right, close. Motion carries. Ben, congratulations. Okay, moving on to old business. May I have a motion in a second to read by title only, third reading ordinance seventy-four dash nineteen.
So moved.
All in favor? All right, close. Motion carries.
In ordinance repealing and replacing city North Canton's public record policy codified as chapter one oh seven, North Canton codified ordinance with the updated and most current policy summarized post or attached here to incorporated hearing as the given statement.
All right, this is the third final reading. Tim has spoken about this choice in committee, one of the highlighted items that we've added to it, that there'd be no cost for printing or any public records. Any questions from council before we get to final read or the final vote? Is there a motion in the second to approve?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? All right. Close. Motion carries. Thank you. May I have a motion in a second to read by title only, third reading ordinance eighty dash nineteen.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? All right. Close. Motion carries. Ten.
In order to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures in the city of North Canton, Ohio, for the period beginning January first, two thousand twenty and ending December thirty first, two thousand twenty, declaring the same to the emergency.
Thank you, Chair, Mayor.
We talked about the budget for a little while now, and there really aren't any changes. We have a couple that Pat and I talked about over the weekend and kind of just some projects that got started, we can use all the money, some projects that we want to get started, and just kind of how we can do that. So we just worked with the finance director and I'm sure she didn't say with that, but besides that, there really aren't any other changes that the mayor has looked at it.
There are a couple actually on page three. I think what we might do is have a motion to amend ordinance number eighty dash two thousand and nineteen. I will call your attention to page thirty. Well, excuse me just a second, we go to the cover page. I have to go to the cover page. We are going to amend lines, items category three three, capital improvement, and that new number will be three million sixty-two thousand seven hundred, three million sixty-two thousand seven hundred. And then down on sewer revenue, we're going to amend that number to four thousand two hundred and fifty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty for a grand total appropriations, forty-six million ninety-six thousand fifty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. And those changes are found on page thirty. You'll notice on transportation, you've added about seventy-five thousand dollars up under contract payments. We've picked up twenty thousand dollars under general government for contract payments, and we've added, as you'll notice, those amounts, the seventy-five thousand, the twenty thousand for the Northfield sanitary sewer, which I'll discuss later, and engineering upgrade. C, hold on, I'm sorry. And here's, let me see here. I think that's where that made.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, I'm sorry. Thank you, Marge. Yeah, down in line, account number six five two seven seven nine five five oh one, facility sewer lines, that number is going to climb from six hundred thousand nine hundred and nine hundred thousand five hundred and sixty. You'll notice that that is increased by six hundred thousand dollars for Northfield Sewer. I think if I get Marge, I think those are the two that I called. So that's the motion to amend.
And the recent meeting, as it was in this year's appropriation conference, and the the engineer said that the specs, you know, had to be redone a few times, and they didn't have time to work the concrete. And they may have time.
Speaker, to a water project.
And Pat, isn't this what you were talking about?
Yes, this is the Northfield project that council authorized previous ordinance in twenty nineteen. And because of the work which we're doing, trying to make sure this is, we get the best price possible, we're not in position to move forward in nineteen, but as this goes down to twenty, we need to close the transfer money to the government or the enterprise fund, wherever it goes, and then do a new thing after the contract is bid out.
So those are the two things that we talked about today. So procedurally, we have to amend it?
Yes, excuse me, or vote for it.
Got it, okay.
So this is your third final vote again, so I think I've made a motion to amend ordinance number eighty dash two thousand and nineteen. We're suing to, this is Loretta's description.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, close. Motion carries.
Before I ask for the final vote, I'd like to leave motion to adopt now, just make motion to mayor.
Yeah, well, I don't want to, before we adopt it, I want to give the mayor an opportunity.
I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you for the privilege of the time to allow me to at least look through the budget. I know I've had some experience here, and my ability goes into it, and I just appreciate everybody's vigilance in trying to come up with the most appropriate budget for our community. So for that, I just want to thank you for the time, and I think it's a good little prepared, and now that we have those amendments, we should go forward.
So you encourage adoption?
Thank you.
It's your time. Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. Okay, well, with that, may I have a motion in a second to adopt the third read, ordinance eighty dash nineteen as.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? All right, close. Motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Darrell. All right, may I have a motion in the second to read by title on the second reading ordinance eighty-one dash nineteen?
Hello?
Second. All in favor? All right, close. Motion carries.
In order to start with the indication, when the heat is sixty-one point five, it's very important that we exist in one line, piece one seven five, in St. Ives, for allotment in Lake Township and recorded, is plat number fifty-nine, page sixty-four, the speech applied, of the Stark County plat records, as score fully described, and exhibit data attached to it.
All right, thank you, Chair. Yes, we talked about this in committee, is that that area where we had a little sliver of easement across someone in Lake Township, and you could not get lending because of it, so we're giving, because we're approaching out of some of the properties, so we're going to give up a little bit there, and this little bit of route, so we can, he can get his, his financing. Right, exactly. He builds the house, Mr. Harrison. So any, any questions? I'm going to move forward with this in the second read. Second. All in favor? All right. Close.
I'm staying.
Member Fontaine, staying six four. Motion adopted. Thank you. Before we head into reports, Darrell.
I have a, I have a question that will guide my potential motion. We have for our consideration this evening, and our council holding a resolution to pursue recovery regarding Arrowhead, and as you'll notice, it does have an emergency clause in it. I would like to see us act on this before yours end. So my question for council, is there anyone who would not be voting for this next week? I know it's a loaded question, we discussed it. Is anybody who's not willing to vote for this?
Well, I would.
You're abstaining.
Right.
Is there anyone else who is going to potentially abstain from this? If not, we let it go until next week. My question is for you. We let it go.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. All right, thank you. Reports, Director of Administration? You'll record. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Rick. Thank you very much. In my efforts to be more active in the community, I'd just like to bring you up today on a few things that we have not to be invited to in ten. And first of all, I want to thank everybody who did attend our, our organization meeting and the oath of office for Matthew, all of us, and myself. I really appreciate the, the welcome that the community has provided me. Had the opportunity to go to SCORE, which is again, organization providing guidance for small business. I wanted to make sure that North Canton is represented and we're interested in helping small business in our community. Had the opportunity to go to Cleveland for a new mayor's conference. There's about fifty mayors here from northeast Ohio, and I was put on by a law firm up there. I won't go with blood, but it was a good call for putting it away. Very excited about the ribbon cutting we had at Homewood County Urgent Care on fourteen forty-four North Main. Again, they opened up as this new, new business on November the first, but we had a very nice gathering, it's Friday night, and with that ribbon cutting, and they're very appreciative and happy to be here in North Canton. We're lucky to have them as the thirtieth urgent care in Ohio, in that first full year. Again, had the opportunity to be at the North Canton Playhouse, have some Christmas presentation and so on, so I encourage everyone to still patronize our North Canton Playhouse. And Winter Fest on the Square, thank you, Bill, for bringing that up to everybody's attention. I know some of us had the opportunity to be there. It really was a, a wonderful time and activity. Dr. Ken Collins from Washington University was very excited and thankful to be the one who flipped the switch for the lighting of the tree, and I think that's something for us to build on, and I know there can be improvements more to that, but I think it is what we see by our citizens and visitors to our community. Also, this last weekend, the Hoover Historical Center had the program, Christmas program, well attended. They need three more horse carriages out there for the rides around the Hoover District and, or the park, I should say. But again, what a great opportunity to be out there with the, that little piece of history that we have in our community. Last but not least, I had an opportunity to be over at the Fenton Lodge, three of the Sept of Basements over in Madison, Ohio. They do an annual Pearl Harbor slash veterans dinner. Had an opportunity to be doing Mayor Kathy Patisaro Perry and serving meals to the veterans there. So just want to let you know that this mayor is willing to get out and about and be a part of our community in more ways than one, and I appreciate that support. And again, I'm learning my way here and willing to work with our community and our council, so thank you for the privilege of your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Member Gold?
Thank you.
I'd like to just briefly respond to three broad comments that were made this evening through the public speaks. Somewhere, somehow, someplace, has become a convenient, cur, a convenient idea that the mayor and the council control the redevelopment of the Hoover Project. The fact of the matter is, and I think everyone needs to understand this clearly and unambiguous, the first issue is there is an unresolved air quality matter at that site. Under the regulation of USCPA, either this council, the previous mayor, or the current mayor has the ability to resolve that matter. It's a function of test results and the equipment that's been resolved to remediate the air quality. The second, and I think we need to be very clear about this, when a project has a large residential component, there are no development funds available in form of grants. Unless the city wishes to make a grant. The fact of the matter is, the cleanup and the project, if it brought to resolution, will be privately financed. Having said that, I would note parenthetically that the owners could go to the Stark County Port Authority and borrow money from it. But there will be no John Brady sites grant that we enjoyed a decade ago. So for all those who are clamoring for a project to move forward, the first step is to have the owners meet federal EPA air quality standards, bottom line. So, no mystery here. The second is that my good friend, Mr. Osborne Chuck, whom I love, often practices what I call thesis journalism. And that means he starts out with an idea, typically a square peg, and drives that thing around whole. Now, oftentimes, Mr. Osborne's assertions go unchallenged, I want you to make sure you catch every word of this. Tonight, he stood up and he said, you know, if you sell this thing for residential property, you may be net eight million bucks. Eight million dollars. Wow, that will cover the infrastructure. I got a news pledge, I'm not so sure, because in the very budget we approved tonight, there's a, there's a sanitary sewer project up on Northfield. That project is six hundred thousand dollars alone that we're budgeting, six seventy, I believe is the total fix. Seven fifty, excuse me. Pretty soon, eight million dollars doesn't seem like a lot of money when we're talking about one relatively short run of sanitary. I reiterated my claim, if we're, my call last week, if we're gonna look at options, let's get drilled down and let's deal with some facts. Let's arrive with them independently, let's debate them, but the bottom line is this, is that the simple assertion that this is, there's some sort of magic formula out here, I'm not sure exists. The other thing is this, Mr. Nepp, I appreciate the fact that you called for safety building and we've got some plans and are moving along. But I think everybody who sits around this table, and some of the folks in the audience, and one of our other boards close by, near and dear to our hearts, needs to understand one very fundamental fact. And that is, in this community, eighty-six percent, eighty-six percent of the taxpayers earn less than a hundred thousand dollars a year, pre-tax. We know that for a fact through reading. What that tells me is, those taxpayers don't have a lot of flex in their household budgets. So as we move forward, school moves forward, and others who ask for public money, we always need to be mindful that the people that we represent expect economy, expect deliberate, and make sure they don't rush into something they can't afford. So, that, Mr. Peters? Is my report.
The rest of the story.
Hard.
Thank you. Thank you, Darryl. Member Fonte.
Well, how do you go after that, my man?
A farewell tour. Farewell tour.
Well anyhow, so Hoover District is true, what you're saying, it's a lost leader, a friend in there. You remember, we have like almost twelve hundred jobs on the side, we always focus on the iconic smokestack and sweeper company. And you're right, there are EPA issues and there's more than one partner, we can't force them to do anything. But keep in mind, the majority of the money's coming from the revenue generated from the jobs, six hundred thousand dollars to the exact profit rate of income. So that'll come over time, but like I said, let's continue with the downtown deep redevelopment areas, let's see what else we can do to stimulate the downtown. But my report was just thanks to Soretta and all those in charge, the administrators for the Winterfest. It was well done, and you know, it's very hot site for the kids. When Mark was on the stage giving this talk about, you know, the history and thanking everybody, I kept right in front of all these little kids, I was trying to catch his attention. And I was surprised, there were a ton of kids there. And man, I think next year, it just was, it was refreshing to see all the exciting things happening. The only thing I would say is the food lines, maybe you do double lines, serve people quicker. But anyhow, that's all I can say.
Thank you. Director Vaughn?
Yes, also want to thank those responsible, the city employees and the volunteers responsible for Winterfest. And especially the decorating of the tree. Want to certainly make a special note, member Soretta and his family was out there. Thirty-two degrees, he's a bucket truck, twenty, twenty-five feet. And he was out there all, all morning. And I was out there for a very brief period of time and it was cold and brought me inside. But we all get to benefit from that, and every job I drive through the city square, I saw him on the way to, I used to stop at the light and you turn your head and look and see the tree so well decorated. But behind the scenes things that I spoke about before, I know firsthand hearing Kelly in administration when she was working on replacing the prior tree and the number of telephone calls that she had back and forth. And the discussion and the people were to replace that, that tree across the city that there are a lot of hands on for these things, but I just want to circle out a couple of folks that I know were kind of led the, led the others in bringing up this project for our enjoyment, so thank you for that.
Member Foltz.
Yeah, thank you to everybody, Mr. Soretta, administration, everybody involved in downtown, it's wonderful, something we're all proud of. And we'll continue to make progress with, with a lot of things for next year, I'm excited about. While registration for each board or just our budget overall, when you see what the impact we provide to residents through their tax dollars, it's pretty significant. It's a, we're in a good place and just be thankful and move forward with it all, be progressive and work together. So my time is standing.
Member Ware? Oh, just a minute, sorry, member Foltz said, if he thought that the hard Northham, New Holiday, Winterfest led up, that it was better than the one that was in downtown Canton.
I will comment to some stadium park, which is probably the top shelf right now, but it's awesome.
See, now I can hear dance scenes, the schools, the stanths, and fireworks. They have, that's a big expense, but it was funny you said that, because I was actually thinking about all the festivities that have happened in our area. And just really how special it is for all of the cities, from the Hall of Fame doing something this year, to Masland, I think even Louisville had an event, and then we had the downtown event. And that was while we were with, kind of September Square being redone, and then I was able to stop by here for a while and that was fun. And to see from far mark, and thanks for getting that going, I was always thinking that we needed to do more, and so that was great that people took that initiative to do that and, and really great. And there was great to hear, again, just all the things that are out there doing, which are out there doing them and, you know, people don't beat the tickets or there's never nothing to do in this community and you forget, so I hope that you can tell us that often, what you're doing and what is out there, remind people how great our playhouse is and the playhouse, I mean, you'll venture downtown Canton, you might go see, you know, what's playing down there now? Scrooge. Yes, Christmas Carol. But like, there's so much great thing, people don't realize how many, from our ballet to our symphony, upgrade all of our communities are, so thank you for saying that. It's just really nice to see that and all the lights. Phil, thanks for bringing up the safety building again, we have spent a lot of money on consultants and kind of looking at that. There's some interesting plans, so keep us on our toes and we can check them on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Schreit?
All right, this is my first time using this crazy microphone, so you guys can hear me. I, I thought Winterfest was amazing, I thought it was a great experience, it was fun to bring my son and my wife and walk through. And I don't know how many people were there, but it was way more exciting than once in a past, I thought. Everybody that was involved, I thought did an amazing job, so thank you for everything. We got to meet a lot of people, Mark walked me around to meet some department heads. I'm excited to get to work, I'm excited to engage the public and listen to some ideas. Larry, Chuck, Bill, thank you, some good points there. Ben, welcome. I didn't, I'm missing something about the article that you guys were referencing, Larry, I didn't get to see that yet, so I'll try to find it. Yeah, I think that's all, I'm just excited to work with everybody and thank you for walking, walking. Thank you for voting in.
Member Soretta?
Oh, yeah. Taking that through, I can notice there's a lot there, isn't there? And we haven't made it through a couple of departments and it's the people that are just kind of who we are, and you've seen some of them, so. But the Winterfest, yeah, it was a success, it was a very good success, a lot of people behind that, I think it was a good crowd, good participation, it was a family oriented, then you, you noticed that right off the bat, just by the stuff that was there. We have a lot of people that, that, this has been so great, first of all, a lot of people really participated in this. From the beginning, where Pat set up, Pat and Kelly, you know, the committee, they're really kind of here with a lot of these things. Remind her people kind of came into it, then people just started rolling into it, and that's exactly the way these kind of things will work. And, and we expect more in the future here, there's two growing pains that will happen with all these things, but and I really think that, first of all, we need to thank some of the people, some, some of them suffered the cracks, we can't have that. So we want to kind of create some things that we make sure that we thank everybody even afterwards. And when we're doing something like this, sometimes that does suffer the cracks, you know, from the library, like Christine Wire, which they're, they're, they need a lot.
Mark?
They're all over.
About the library?
The library people, like Christina Wire, and Terry Urick, believe your name is, they, they, or they were there like with Pat, they don't just pay like Pat, a little echo of Park or not too, but they were there from morning when it was cold till the very end, and those people need to be recognized and want to make sure we do that. So, let's say something to them. So we do have a lot of people to thank, I want, we want to make sure that we do that, so we should probably do some as a council, maybe set some up next week, just to recognize that and some things, so I'll make sure we do that. As far as putting up the tree, the poor weather, you know, the ladies that were, you know, the people that participated, one, one thing they said that really kind of drove them, and I get it too, is when they're out there freezing, people driving by and blowing their hair, that's all they need. Yeah, this kind of community, you can deal with that, you know, that, that, you know, they want to thank everybody, that was cool, that's all you really need sometimes, and you get the right people out there, so that's kind of cool stuff with that. And that's why I want to thank Pat and his crew, the, and I said this up there, the employees who helped put this thing up, it's fantastic, but people don't realize that they have to take it down, this is sub zero, that is when you really need to thank those folks, because we're doing all this cool stuff and they got to take it all down. Steve did a wonderful job with the first time lighting the tree with Tim, President Walsh, and, you know, he can see the, all the support that the kids were paying in front of him and everything, so this is that. Would you do it better next time? Right back. So thank you, that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mark. Inter director of finance, Laura?
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, but you guys overlooked, can you have phone when you're talking? And on rare and spirit ending the twelve days of Christmas, and we had a Saturday night, it was, well, attended and difficult to get around the downtown city, you know, to get home. But, no, I think it's great, all the city to come to.
That you agree?
Thank you, Mr. President, some really good news on our grant fund. We have three items to talk about, one we may have heard about. You know that we asked for full PWC funding to help with the slug press on the water plant, and we were funded. We received one million four hundred twenty-nine thousand three hundred thirty dollars. And that covers up forty-nine percent of the project cost, and half of that, or seven hundred fourteen six sixty-five, is in the form of a grant. The other fifty percent is in the form of a zero percent, just twenty years ago. And that comes to about thirty-five seven fifty a year, which as we discussed back when we debated the project, we should see that savings, if not more, not just the, the cost of saving, calling it less. So it's always going to pay for the sub there. Of course, I guess the bad side of the point is we can come up with fifty-one percent, debate that if we move forward. Another project where I submitted a grant to SCAT, start from the area transportation study, they administered the federal dollars, so we got fur highways. And we got funded in the amount of nine hundred and four thousand, a future paving of a lane, and we started Rose Lane, and that's up to seven. That's not until fiscal twenty twenty-six, because they funded this quite a bit in advance. So earliest we had that money, July first, twenty twenty-five, but a lot of occasions, those paving projects get bumped forward, because other projects fall behind. It's easy to fill a gap with a paving project, at least when you're in the hot river. Four thousand we got, so we're really excited about that. And speaking of paving projects getting moved forward, SCAT, at the last meeting, also moved our portage paving, we got that in fiscal twenty twenty-one. We got that a number of years ago, we got four hundred sixty-two thousand there, they moved that to fiscal twenty, which will allow us to sell that very, very early in the year.
For twenty.
Federal fiscal twenty now. If you recall, the problems we ran into with that, the growth, being sold really late in the year, and everything we did, that should be a new point now. Saves a few months there. So really did lose on those three.
Thanks, Laura.
I also noticed that, yeah, Rose Lane completed, we had a little extra money left over, our twenty twenty, twenty nineteen paving contract was looking for extra work at the end of the year. And literally held at a price of two dollars a ton, twenty-five bucks a truck or whatever, and asked if we had any extra work to do. Yeah, we had some money left over, we had a good year, got our prices concerned early. So we were ready to issue a couple of purchase orders and give, after the waterline progress, and what these paid. Just done the waterline there, it's been a long stint, it's been built. And Mississippi Southeast and Rose Lane South West. It was last week, so we'll see if we can take outstanding, well done, I think. Lastly, part of advice, though, that I had to supply the council with the framing and bridge inspection reports.
With what?
Annual bridge inspection reports. And those are really, so we need to hand those out and have our copies of the administration, move nothing from shadowing, asking in good shape for some minor maintenance, I guess I just saw. concludes my report, if there's no questions?
Okay, and just a reminder, next Monday, December sixteenth, we'll have our special council meeting. This concludes the agenda for this meeting. Your motion to adjourn?
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close. Motion carries, we adjourn. Now I'd like to call a order, the special committee, the whole meeting, Monday, December ninth, seven fifty-one PM. Then we can call a vote again for this meeting. Member Holt?
Here.
Member Fonte?
Here.
Member Peters?
Here.
Member Folt?
Here.
Member Ware?
Here.
Member Schreit?
Here.
Member Soretta?
Here, but everybody except you have?
Uh, you can, yeah, you can step up. Seven. Thank you, Mark. Okay, first and all, yes, my answer property, Chair Ware.
Okay, so we talked about this kind of video last week, right, Pat, I think we had a, a good handle on it. Do you, is there anything else you want to say this week, I think you and I talked about a couple of things, and maybe one would just kind of hit a couple of points, and then you need to make some comments.
Yes, thank you, and I think while the members of council or the mayor or whoever may have additional questions, they can formulate them. While I just give just a little bit of additional information, just remaining to golf in general. And, you know, I, I wasn't here to, to speak to the points that. And, you know, I wasn't here in two thousand and eight to speak to the points that Mr. Roswell or Ms. Roswell made. He was a member at the time. I think I was just granted in high school. And I know it dispute a lot of what he said at that time. But the, you know, the study that was, it passed out was very informative. Certainly snatched out of time. It was from two thousand and three. For a long time ago, it covered the indicated period of time leading up to that. So I've done a little bit, just, you know, additional reading and whatnot. Just want to share a few things that state of golf today. It certainly isn't a fantasy and that it's, you know, all roses. There are definitely many challenges still facing golf. But what we are able to talk about is that the pace of golf course closings is stabilized. That we see that the great golf course gold rush occurred peak from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and six, in which the, you know, the supply of golf courses, you know, went up forty percent. It's much like retail today. You know, it's overbuilt and there needs to be a supply and demand balance recreated. When we look at the number of golfers that are playing, the traditional participation, you mean people actually playing on a course, not some sort of e-sport thing, has stabilized at twenty-four million course golfers. And this has been three years in a row now. So that, that dropping has, has leveled off. Two point six million golfers played for the very first time last year, twenty eighteen. And that matches an all-time high set in twenty seventeen, which was the fourth year in a row that number had increased. There are more municipal golf courses than ever. Some twenty-eight hundred across the United States. Two-thirds of these courses are profitable. That makes one-third not profitable. And those that are not profitable, to many points, are being reconsidered for other purposes. And purposes are, you know, all over creation here, I want to think of the use for it. When we look at the macro on golf, consistent increases in TV viewership, powers of coverage, and attendance, all up. Golf returns in the Olympic Games in twenty sixteen is beyond the Olympic Games in twenty twenty. Girls that are under eighteen in the fastest growth sector in golf. That when we look back twenty years ago, one of twelve junior golfers were ethically diverse. Today is one in four. Twenty years ago, one of six junior golfers were girls. Today is one in three. So it's different people that are playing golf than not perhaps the stereotype type that, that we see that, you know, individuals like me that might be a baby boomer. But there are four million baby boomers retire every year for at least the next ten years. These individuals, you know, require your time and the financial confidence to play the ball. Half of these will be stoner golfers. When you look at some reports on the national rounds of the play, it's not geographically equal across all the United States. There has been more of a slowdown in golf in the south due to being tied to the lodging industry, which is being funded, and economic limitations on resort travel. You'd be surprised to know that not all golf courses were built to play golf. They were built to support other economic fundamentals, such as resorts and lodging. But in the north, states actually experienced an increase in the volume of golf play. Golfers are playing longer in a limited season, even extending into snow and playing in temperatures of forty to fifty degrees. More of the golf course closings that are not realistically known are tied to real estate development. And we have an expert here, so I don't want to dwell too much on that. But low unemployment and strong consumer spending are trends that tie closely to more golf being played. So it kind of makes sense if you're unemployed or you're watching your Visa queues and the average cost for a run of golf is thirty-five dollars today on the course. You probably aren't going to play as much golf, but we're going through peak again now where, you know, record low unemployment, sustained consumer spending increasing. And that leads to a promotion to more golf play. That's not to say that all the things that you want to avoid happen. You want to spend a lot of new diligence making sure that they don't. And that means that, you know, under the mayor's watch, that there is a hyper-focus on what is occurring there, daily attention to detail. And this is not something that is going to be left to its own devices and no one knows what's going on. That's not how I operate. That's not how their wilder operates, and we agree in that respect. So it's all about, you know, I think giving this venue an opportunity to succeed while you figure out what you want to do. And again, everything that you want to do comes at a cost. Remember Volt's point about residential development? And it may be true, and I don't disagree in respect of having the city being in the developed business. I think it is a good opportunity to make some money. But we also need to keep in mind what we are developing and what future liabilities we are creating. So although we may enjoy revenues in proceeds today that seem rather large compared to what we're used to, we have to keep in mind that this is a liability now, an asset to be created in the books that becomes a liability for all the future needs of that development. And that is going to be all kinds of infrastructure that is going to be replaced from now on and forever. And, you know, that money that is gained today, it won't be here twenty years from now. To use it to replace those water lines, those sewer lines, those sidewalks, or whatever else there is that's, you know, how it can be done. So I just want, you know, everybody know that I'm not approaching this as, as if it is some sort of rose colored glasses on and it's all eye-eyed optimism. It's real. I think we have a real planet that has a real opportunity to succeed while you figure out what you want to do, whatever that may be. This is what we have some more color on golf this night, just, you know, one point of view.
Often selected as the number one golf course in the United States and often even selected as the location for the US Open, Pebble Beach. Many people don't realize that Pebble Beach is a municipal golf course.
Can I make, can I make a comment? So, you know, when I look at this facility, I see the potential. If we stay along the lines where we are, I think we have to open up our thinking, you know, keep in mind green space is real important for people. I think we could, you know, without a whole lot of money include, you know, biking, walking, integrated into the hundred and five acres, because some of those acres are very usable. And I know a hundred and five acres is tight for a golf course. But at the very least, you know, let's just say we improve the signage. Let's say, for example, we change the name. Because like it was there with a million years and people thought that was a private course or a private amenity. You know, so maybe it could be something like the North Canton Public Golf and Airway Center, or whatever, you know, you guys decide. But I also think that we need to be thinking about adding, you know, maybe a pickleball court, possibly a bocce court. I don't think these would be super expensive things to do to create more of an atmosphere. And I just saw a report, it was in one of the metro parks. It was like a walking path, but it was an ice skating path. And so, you know, for winter entertainment, it was, I mean, it looked like it was well-attended. You know, a family fun thing to do, or if you just need some exercise, you know, get out of the house, get some of that winter air. I think these are things that we can do. And then if we see how this goes over the next five years, see if they can dial this thing in and make it more of a net new Tory possible, you know, a viable thing for the city. I would always say that, you know, anytime you can retain that green space and, you know, there's, there's other things you could probably do as well that would belong to the entertainment factor. And I'm all for it.
All right, any questions right now?
Well, yeah, just a few points to follow up with Dominic. We're looking at the lease agreement.
It's not a lease agreement, it's a management agreement.
Management agreement, excuse me. Correct. If we decided to put additional capital in there, that can come in later date. This year if we, let's look at something, look at the law or bocce or someone decided. It would involve a discussion, obviously, you know, with the, the operator to go of course and us. So, you know, I'm favorable to those things. I think we have to make this property as attractive as we can for golf, for swimming, for rental opportunities. Everything's on the table, in my opinion. So it's one of the kind of records before we have a capital. I think we should take that with this once we get to a point, hopefully this is supported to council and sign, that we look at the other alternative capital improvements that we made. Good, thank you.
Yeah, in the agreement, doesn't it, or in the management agreement, doesn't it say something like between the city and the management or the company that we mutually agree on little changes or modifications? We can make a amendment and then modification amendments. No, we can't amendments to that.
To answer your question, maybe it's a two-part answer, but as it relates to the management, the focus, what you want to make sure of is that, that the, that the management could not unilaterally make decisions on what to do as far as capital improvements, that they felt this is a decision that is to be made by the city. It, it comes back to this body in the making on how we move that forward. That, that's not to say that the city, this agreement does not prevent the city from doing anything on his own in the back of the head. It's just that they're not going to take, you know, back on action.
With our approval.
Right.
Got it. Okay.
So council could, as any future day, as with any of its public parks, so we've decided to add additional features to it.
Okay, cool. That's what I'm going to ask.
Yeah, for those that would coincide you for promoting a fiber contract, would you speak to that? Some of them may say, why not do a series of linear contracts? What's your thought process there?
You know, a lot of the stuff that I look at, it, there's basically three ways, it's three ways to run a golf course. You can enter into a management contract, you can enter into a lease agreement, or you can sell it to an operator who's going to then operate that golf course. And, you know, a lot of it depends on what you're requiring the management company to do. And when we see, you know, like Parlo Palmeroff and, you know, some of the other big national players, they're not interested in coming in to your facility with less than a fifteen, twenty-five year agreement to run it. There is a, there is a revenue split by greens, fees and whatnot. And in those types of regimes, you know, you may be required to make capital improvements, but they have a financial revolver to do. In my assessment of where we are today, given the consultant's report, we had a good look at where we're at, the best course of options for the city at this time is a management agreement with either a regional or local operator. So that is why we got, you know, the ones that, the ones that we did. And when you look at all of those managed contracts and you talk to them, some might say, well, no, they're managing, they're just managing whatever, but we want them to have an interest in succeeding. And some of these, in fact, I do this in case of who we have in present, want to maintain their public posture that they are successful in what they do. And, you know, when we started the discussion with Kemper, Willy Jasper and whatnot, they were all looking at Severnburg, who we used to have. And knowing a little bit about how we would need to get new equipment and of course whatnot, I felt that it would be more advantageous to the city that whatever contract you sign coincides with any leasing of new equipment that we have. So that we were never in a position where we were switching operators while we were still carrying a lease or vice versa. When you look at this and you say, well, let's look at a one-year contract or a two-year contract. At that level, you're not going to find anybody that wants to come in and really succeed at what you're trying to do. And this is, this is very much a work in progress. It's going to take, it's taken a hurricane effort to get to where we are today just to be able to assume the operations in a manner that was without pickup. Events continue to go on, whether it's for help, whether we ensure capital, golf to. But if you put this out as a two-year contract, in my, in my opinion, from what I've looked at, you're just going to find fewer and fewer entities that are willing to do it, and then they really won't care that. Perhaps when you play golf, you may be able to speak to this as well, but from what I've seen, golf leagues, you know, they like to play golf and they want to go to a course that they know is going to be there. And, you know, when some of these other courses have closed, there's a scramble to get to a new facility and get on the books, because there's only so much daylight, there's only so many runs of golf that you can play. And if you have more and more leagues that you can get on, you may be bucking out. So in my mind, where you go to a, you know, two-year lease or even less, you're staying to the golfing community. There's a good chance that this course isn't going to be an operation. At least, at least it's part of this management contract expired. We probably should just look at someplace else to start that. Go down that road, you're just going to put it in the death spiral, the league will. So, thanks, that makes sense.
Yeah, I want to follow up to Pat's point. I was involved with the league, Tammy, and we moved because we kept hearing rumors of it itself. And it's going to be developed. And so we moved four years ago looking for a spot, because we didn't want to be in a situation where it wasn't available to our league time that we needed. We were actually tired and people had worked in that point. You give yourself some assured league play if you have a longer contract. If you say, well, you have a two-year contract, people might not even do it arrowhead because they're going to think, well, they have it in two years. I better get out now so I get my time slot. Because there's not a lot of golf courses left. They're, they're being sold, they're being developed. You keep hearing rumors about other courses in this area. And I think it's essential that we, we're going to make a commitment, we're going to do it right for five years. We give the operator a chance if they can make money. There's an incentive clause in here that I totally agree with the administration. We're not just doing pass and make management, we're also going to put incentives in so that they do utilize in that profit that we can put that in force as we're looking to do other capital improvements. I think that's essential. I applaud Pat for writing this out, working with this with some other, obviously, but to reviewing this and knowing what this is, what this takes to run this course with a future family. Specifically, we're going to have a hands-on approach of what's going on daily. We just didn't have that before. I think we can't emphasize that enough. Everybody had good intentions, but it got away. And now it's a situation where we're on top of it with daily reports that we want, monthly reports, forecasts. We can't control modernization, we can control everything else. And we have a good name behind this, I think it's going to be a fruitful, leadership development organization. Thank you.
I'm just saying something real quick. I'm not sold on the viability of golf long-term for us even, you know, owning a fair amount of long-term plot. long-term, but to not provide this stability, that this contract, and I believe this is an opportunity for us to look at other opportunities. So, I guess it doesn't matter whether you do it or not, you have to provide this stability. I think you've stopped believing, and I think that control is in place, and that was obviously lacking before. But I'm looking at this as an opportunity to explore avenues to develop, so.
Well, I think last week, Darryl, we've been set to, we need to have someone come in and give all those options. And Pat, we want to talk, the five years have made sense, and it gave us that timeframe where we've got to make these acquisitions, and, you know, we may let go of the football team that belonged, maybe we let go of the scholarships, all those kids are still in the scholarships, and you're essentially doing the same thing here, so I think we have a good starting point.
So, you have votes for a resolution, would you?
Yeah.
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 Resolution, okay. All right, that's it.
And then Tim, do you have a thought about the resolution, our vision?
Yes, this is, much as, it's written, simply asking for the authority to permit the city to determine exactly what's owed, whether we require a disagreement, and to take all necessary efforts to see that the city is, and.
Any questions? Guys on that one?
Yep.
Where are you going? Darryl already dressed that over there?
Yes.
Get six votes.
Yeah.
Okay, that concludes this agenda. I'm going to take most new adjournments.
Sub move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, we're adjourned. Good evening, everyone.